Is that everyone?
This Livingston City Commission meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
Here.
Vice Chair Hale.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
First on the agenda is general public comment. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. We'll start with people in the room. Hi, Leslie. You can set the precedent with your name and address, please.
Let's see. I have one of each. Leslie Pygell, let's see. So, 166 Miller Drive. I live in the five acre area and I just wanted to make a public comment regarding I was on vacation when I got a text about what came out in the paper. We all know that whatever comes out in the papers is not a hundred percent accurate. So I'm hoping to, over the door, be a part of your conversation. I am the president of It's My Land LLC. We are registered with the state. We are an upcoming nonprofit that has a lot of people in our donuts that attend our meetings. We've had both city and county people visit our meetings to be able to understand what it is about and what we want to protect and what we want to be able to do to work with the city with the fact of wanting to zone and expand into our county lands. So just wanted to throw that out there. You know, under Title VII, there's a few exemptions with the city government that doesn't allow you to come into the donut without the county commission agreeing to it. So we're up on all of that and open to the discussion, but we have a very large group and I, again, love to talk to you about that. So to go faster here, now I'm going to talk to you about the chamber. So 303 East Park Street. I wanted to hand this out to you. This is our grand opening on May 19th. Our exhibit is en route as we speak, so super excited. At 5 o'clock on Friday, the 19th, we'll have a little spaire to open the exhibit. And it's going to be very exciting for it becoming. I also have, so that's just like a reminder, because I know I came in front of you already. Maybe I can peek up. Because I need that. Thank you. So this last thing, over the years, I have, we go really fast here, but over the years, we've had changes with the parade route and changes with the parade itself, rules and regulations. And after the last couple of years of craziness, we have rewritten our rules, made them nice and big, and everybody that joins the parade has to sign off on. I would just encourage you to feel free to read through, and if you have any feedback on that, as to, I know that Lisa Lowey received numerous calls and had to tell all of them, "Call the Chamber." I hope that, you know, understanding that both the city and the Chamber of Commerce, representing the city of Livingston and its parade and all of the businesses that are in it and beyond, we're going to try to have a parade this year goes back to that hometown and so that hometown feel. And our parade this year is to the Moon and Back, Livingston to the Moon and Back. So during COVID, you know that we couldn't have a parade for one year, and our very own temporary visiting astronaut, she made us a video, so you'll start to see that come out again. She was supposed to be the actual grand marshal of the parade, so we couldn't have it that year. So we've asked her to come back. We haven't gotten the answer yet, but we felt that this was time to be in the 99th year. And so that would be the, that's the theme of this year. So I just imagine a little space suits and little rockets everywhere, and how can you get in trouble with that, right? But we're going to get, right. We're going to, thank you for getting that.
Yeah.
That's number three on the list here, by the way. So please, if you see that there's something that we don't have, we're going to start announcing our signups tomorrow and to get ready for the parade. And I know I'll be back in front of you about the round again this year, so I appreciate you letting me speak tonight on this.
Leslie, I normally don't respond to comment, but I just want to say a couple of things. So first, the city never said that we wanted to expand and zone. So just so you know, we five have never said that about the five acre tracts, and I've never heard the city manager say that, just so you know that. But I do want to learn more about this is my land, so, or it's my land, so I'd like to connect with you.
Absolutely.
And then I'm going to actually submit these for the records, so they'll go in the minutes, if you don't mind, so that it's easy for the public to find your
Absolutely.
sheet, if that's okay. And then just so it'll go in the next packet and be easy for people to find. Thank you so much for coming and telling us about your good events.
Absolutely.
It's nice to have something fun to look forward to.
Yeah, I can't believe it's right here.
I know. It's exciting. After a long winter. Thank you, Leslie. Is there anyone else that wants to give general public comment? Hi, Patricia. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Patricia Gray, 204 East Callender Street. Livingston, Montana. I actually saw one here. I sent you some material on the civic center. And I just want to underscore that this is the year that we finally have our sanctuary park, including McCloud Island on the National Strike Register. It's so exciting for us because it took Jack Lewis three years of work to get to to this point. So we're we, everybody always said it was on the National Strike Register, but it wasn't. So I I listed a number of things that I think would be so wonderful. I know I've jumped into the gun as far as the wellness center and all that is concerned, but it, it isn't to me, it's a beautiful building. And it has an original piece of art on it. And people put junk in front of that art. At the very least, what we could do is move all the junk in front of an original piece of art away from that art and create some something so people won't continue to do that to Parks Reese is a very well-known artist and of Samaritan internationally. He deserves more than what his his work deserves more than what it's gotten. So if we could do that and and I would solicit your help in looking at what we do about McCloud Island. Warren McGee, really, rest of Sanctuary Park, wonderful, but we, we love that area around Ben Shell. But that area deserves landscaping. That building deserves painting. And and Lindy Gibson, this loves paint everything. And so, you know, if need be, we'll find the paint and the painter, you know, but it just seems like this summer, it would be so wonderful for us to celebrate that area. We don't know what the future of it's going to be, but what we have now is a wildlife viewing, unique place where osprey nest. And it's it has the potential to be beautiful as opposed to ugly. And it's not an ugly building. It's a gorgeous building. So I would encourage this commission, thank you very much for considering as we go into now, it's on the National Strike Register. Jack says it's not there till it's there, which he thinks is due. Could we look forward to public-private partnership in which we all work together? Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
The one other thing I want to mention, too. I, I, I wish that our city would have something that takes a look at water per se. I don't know if we have committees that that could take water into consideration. Maybe our conservation group. But we are bound by water. We're defined by water. For the time I've been here, I have fought to keep our water on an obstructed end and whole because 83 miles away, it begins at Yellowstone, like. So I just wanted to bring in the whole issue of water that this community could take seriously. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Is there anyone else that wants to give general public comment? Come on up. You can just share your name and your address and sign in, and you'll get four minutes.
Wonderful.
Thanks for coming, Keegan.
Okay, so my name is Keegan Nashon. And my address is 478 Rio Creek. So I just wanted to like put as a matter of public record in this space also that our democracy is experiencing some things that I don't agree with. And I'm deeply concerned, first of all, about Representative Sapper's removal from her chair in the House. But what that means practically for us as a community is that every committee that she sits on, they've removed all of the bills from. And so practically, that means that Representative Bishop is not able to speak on bills on our behalf. Particularly in the House Judiciary, which here is a lot of quite controversial bills. And I'm significantly concerned by the truncation of our representative's knowledge in conjunction with the lack of allowance of free speech within our legislature at this particular time. And I would also like to note that the House Gallery is supposed to be available to people of whatever space that it is supposed to be representing. And the fact that the House Gallery is closed is concerning to me mostly because I was trying to watch active floor sessions that they were having and the feed through MPAN, even though it is controlled by PBS and is an external sort of system, it was glitching because of the amount of people that we're also trying to watch. And so there was literally no way for the public to know what was happening on our House floor in real time. And that, to me, is a deeply democratic principle, regardless of where you lie on the spectrum. It is something that should be available to the public. And in that same breath, the people who control what is recorded by MPAN, it's, it's controlled by the people that are in committees and in the House. So it's whoever the chair is. Like that control has to do with making sure that like if some representative is out of line, they can remove the, like, you know, microphone from them. However, what's concerning to me is particularly the day of protest, which I was there for, which was nonviolent. That day, they cut the feed. They cut, they cut the recording through MPAN, so there is no publicly available recording for what happened during the time of the protest on our floor. And so I wanted to bring all of that to the attention of this thank you all for everything that you do. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Keegan. And thanks for, thanks for sharing it, since I know not all commissioners are tracking the legislature closely. And like, while it's not our jurisdiction, she, her district basically overlaps ours.
Yeah.
Pretty cleanly, I think.
Provided some insight that I haven't heard.
Oh, okay.
You know, right now, so.
And she works closely with our
I appreciate that.
She works closely with our government when we have things that we need help with at the state level. So thank you.
When you say she, you're talking about
Representative Bishop. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that wants to give public comment? Otherwise, I'm going to go online. All right, folks online, do any of you want to share a comment? I don't see any. All right, general public comments closed. We'll run the consent items. We have five consent items on the agenda tonight. Does anyone want to make a motion for all five or for anything for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I think a motion to approve A, B, C, D, and E.
One second. Motion to make short second by Hale. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
Or Vice Chair Hale.
Or Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Next up is a proclamation. Proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, declaring May 2023 is Nomo May in the City of Livingston. Whereas pollinators are being threatened due to habitat loss, pesticide use, pathogens and parasites. And whereas recent research suggests that the pollinators make use of no-mow spaces as key floral resources are available during early spring, whereas the formative period for establishment of pollinators and the many songbirds and wildlife species that depend on them occurs in the late spring and summer in Livingston as they emerge from dormancy and require flowering plants providing crucial foraging habitat. And whereas the City of Livingston would like to encourage interested residents to increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices on their property for the month of May. And whereas Nomo May is a voluntary committee initiative that encourages property owners to limit mowing during the month of May to provide early season foraging resources for pollinators that emerge in early spring, especially in urban landscapes. And whereas the City of Livingston would like to encourage interested residents to increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices on their own properties for the month of May during this critical formative period. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Livingston recognizes the importance of Nomo May to promote and educate the community about the critical period of pollinator emergence and the generation of crucial pollinators supporting early spring foraging opportunities. Yet further resolved that the City Commission directs the city manager to observe Nomo May in certain city facilities and parks to encourage the pollinating and foraging activities that support our ecosystem. I'm Melissa Noots, Chair. Do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 to be Nomo May in Livingston, Montana, and encourage all residents to recognize this observance. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Noots. I will point out for the commissioners that the city will render Nomo May in Mars Park at Mayor's Landing within the roping arena, on the grounds of the library, in conjunction with the library, and then also on the Myers River View Trail and at Reservoir Park as well. And we also encourage and know that many homeowners will participate on their private property, too. So stand for any questions you have.
And I think there's a link on the city website somewhere where people can learn more.
There is. There was a note in the newsletter that went out last night, and it included a link to print your own sign should you wish to observe the celebration on your property.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. I would add that one of the greatest things for native pollinators are native plants. So that would be another thing if folks are really into protecting pollinators. Anything else you folks want to say before we move on?
Yeah, when the spring start here? It's like it should be mid-May to mid-June, Nomo.
I saw dandelion in my yard this morning.
Yeah, Jeff. Okay, good. That's encouraging.
Actually, yeah. Just for this agenda packet. Commissioner Lyons, did you have?
Just wondering if there are any other proclamations that we can do about avoidance of chores.
Commissioner Lyons, if you want to bring something forward to our city manager, we can, I'm sure we can work that in.
We'll work on that.
Well, and then I will also say, Commissioner Lyons, if you move to native plant species and away from regular grass, you will move away from said chores for the entire season.
Boom by Sir Kale.
So there you go.
Maybe if I get
Rebuttal, yeah.
If I get compostable plates, I won't have to do dishes anymore.
Yeah, you know, you're going to have to like
That's a different problem.
compostable, like
That's a different problem.
which you probably already have.
You're going to have to propose some composting facilities that can handle that in Livingston before that. Does anybody else want to say anything? Are we ready to move on? Okay. Next step. What's next? Let's look. Action items already.
That's a parties.
Yeah, we like those.
There is a lot of parties. A consideration of open container enforcement waiver during the fifth annual Creek to Peak event. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before you is related to a Soapbox Derby event out on Myers Lane, and this, I believe, is the third year of the event. And of note, in addition to the request for exception to the Publican's, the Livingston Municipal Code provisions concerning public consumption of beer or liquor, the applicant has also been encouraged by Livingston Fire Rescue to include emergency medical coverage at the event, and it's my understanding they have agreed to do so. So I will stand for any questions you may have, and I'll also point out that the event organizer has joined us virtually. Should you have any questions that you would like to ask of the organizer as well.
Thank you. Clarifying questions? Commissioner Lyons first, and then we can come to Commissioner Schwartz.
So this isn't specific to the event, but I've noticed in my time on the commission that we get a lot of these requests for waivers. To me, it doesn't particularly seem like a matter of policy, like for us to weigh in on one event and another and another. And so I just kind of see opportunity for efficiency in the ordinance to kind of rethink bringing every one of these to us. I, like, it's not bothersome. I mean, Commissioner Schwartz was saying, oh, we're talking about parties. That's fun. It is like nice to have some levity, but it seems like it comes up relatively frequently, and we've never really had much of a substantive conversation about it, a policy really related conversation about it. And so it seems to me like maybe we could kind of rethink the ordinance in a way that would require commission every single time a request for a way comes up. And that's just my, my opinion.
Yeah, I want to, I want to let you respond, but also I want to be careful that we don't go off topic. Since this is essentially, I got it. Yep. And so so I want Mr. Gager to be able to respond, but then if it's something that other commissioners are interested in, we could put it on a future agenda if you see an opportunity to address what Commissioner Lyons could, do you want to take a moment to respond?
Yeah, my, my initial thought is at this point, there is no provision in Livingston Municipal Code for administrative review and/or an overrule of, of the code, but we could certainly build a mechanism like that into the code concerning alcohol consumption if that is the desire of the commission.
Can I just say like a head nod if other commissioners are open to a conversation about, would you? You could say
I'm going to say one thing.
Yeah.
One, everything. I suspect one of the reasons that we look at this is because it allows for public comment for the neighbors of where said party is happening. That would be my only thought.
So we could bring it back, but I want to, I want to put a pin in that, then the idea of changing the ordinance and like not talk about that anymore. And then you can bring it back. But now Commissioner
Do we have a clarifying question? Is there a vendor providing, or is this some?
Yes, it's, it's my understanding they are bringing in catabatic brewing as their police chief passes, sign off on that. Exactly. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Are there other questions about this item?
No, that's it. My clarifying thing was that we just, you know, a bunch of
So how about
people drinking outsiders.
Thanks. So it sounds like there's enough content that commissioners would be wanting to talk about it publicly if you want to. I don't think it's a super high priority, given everything else we have, but at some point put on agenda. And then can I have a motion?
I make motion to approve, um, action item A.
Do you want to read the one that's written?
Oh, okay. I moved to approve the request for creative inception to the enforcement of the open container statute during the Creek to Peak Soapbox Derby.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
Second.
Um, public comment. Thank you. Second by Lyons. A public comment on open container waiver for Peak to Creek event. Anybody in the room? And then we'll go online next. Hi, Leslie.
Okay. Leslie Pygell, 303 East Park. I'm a little confused, although if you're going to have another meeting, meeting the commissioners about the ordinance that we do have. And all of us, many of us that have events like the parade, closures of downtown, there's an area where it says that it's got to be within a two-block radius of an event or thereof, like square footage wise. And my concern is that I was just not really concerned because catabatic knows what they're doing when they're checking my IDs, but so this is, even though
Leslie, are you talking about the Peak to Creek?
Yes. So up on the area up there. So if you were to have an event in town at a park, everything is enclosed in the area up there. So that just means that are they all within an enclosed area? They're just taking their cups, hovering in the car and driving off. So what is the, normally you would have like a fence, like clear garden, right? You're within a condensed area within the downtown for different events. Park has clear area when you're having the open containers. So which is how the police, the PD has always been able to maintain that. So being that there's different access points up there, what is their boundaries? They've set, would be the only question for me, you know, kind of flying down the dirt road there, running into people that are hiking, walking by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make sure, I'll take all public comment, and then the commission can ask, thank you, Leslie. Is there anybody else in the room that wants to give public comment? I'm going to go to online. Are there folks online that want to give comment on this agenda item? I am not seeing anyone.
Is, uh, I'm not sure if this is a good time.
Yeah, can you please, you can get four minutes for public comment, and if you could just start with your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay. My name is Brandon Schreiner, and 1414 Inglemar Boulevard in Belgrade, Montana. I'm one of the owners of Creek to Peak. I'm not exactly sure if this is the time where I do speak up. But I was just more throwing out there if there was any questions about the event or how we kind of flow things, anything that I could help answer, I am available.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Is there anyone else that wants to give comment? Okay, seen the public comment on action item A is closed, and we'll go back to the commission. If you don't mind, I'll ask a follow-up question, and then we can start deliberating. Mr. Gager, can you? This is obviously not a legislative commission issue, how you know, special permits are permitted or evaluated. Can you, I mean, in terms of like enforcement, can you shed some light on the process that Leslie was bringing up?
Mm-hmm. Yep, absolutely. And so yes, this event is perhaps a little bit different from some other events that happen in city parks or within the downtown. However, I'll note on, on page 31 of your packet that there is a map with the organizers have included for, for the commission's viewing, and basically it outlines the, the area. And so you know, while it is a little bit of a linear event area, there is certainly a closed portion of the road. And, and that is, is the event area in which the alcohol consumption would occur as, as the event would occur. And I'll also say there is a provision in, in the application from the organizers about the ability to quickly reopen the road during the event as needed. So they, at, at a staff level, we have reviewed, you know, the road closure and the alcohol consumption separately, and, and staff is comfortable with the, the provisions of the organizers.
Thanks. Commissioners? Who would like to start? Anyone have comments?
I think it's great. Fun.
Anyone else? It sounds like it's gone through review, and if the, you know, staff say that this is something that they can administer and the police chief has looked at it, et cetera. Yeah. I don't see any issues with it. Y'all ready to vote? So we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
For.
Vice Chair Hale.
Or Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Have fun, be safe. Brandon, at all. Next on the agenda is action item B, consideration of open container enforcement waiver during the first annual fossils fest at Miles Park. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before the evening is similar to the last waiver of the Livingston Municipal Code requirements related to enforcement of open container provisions. And the event itself is a concert that will involve three bands and several vendors down at the band show in Miles Park. And a portion of the proceeds, I believe 25%, are going to support the community wellness facility project, and the event is scheduled for July 21. At this time, I will note that both the police and fire departments have not advised for a need to have them on staff then, given the, the expected size and in anticipation of a possible question, I'll note that they have an alcohol vendor lined up as well. That is somebody that the, the city is aware of and, and have done business with on, on events. So I'll stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? All right. How about a motion?
I make motion to approve, um, action item B.
Motion to make shorts and second by Lyons. Public comment? Folks in the room? Okay. You don't have to give comment. You have to offer to you give comment. But you may, there's no pressure either way. So and so
Leslie Pygell, yeah.
Yes, Leslie Pygell. So just, just a question on this. The, you know, when we have the events down in the park, there's like wristbands that are used. Was there any done in the application? I guess that would be my point to bring up. If there's not going to be a beer garden, it's going to be open, like when we've always had all the other events down there. You have that, I forget what that's called, where they set up at the rodeo where they check your ID and then they put a little wristband on, make your old Um, you have that, I forget what that's called, where they set up at the rodeo where they check your ID and then they put a little wristband on, make your old up to be walking around with a beer in your hand. Um, so if any of those things were actually put into this new event, being that it is a new event, that would be kind of important. Um, maybe they're just not aware of how it's done and done before, like, uh, the heck is that called? The two day band thing that you guys sit used to do. Somewhere else, right? So, um, I guess that would just be my comment was to be, make sure that, um, you know. All of the events are kind of following the same thing, like, uh, you know, be, be the same thing. Make it all have a little wristbands and.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Does anyone else here that wants to give comment? Okay, I'll go online. Anybody online? Public, I don't see anyone, so public comment fraction I'm be is closed. Um, Mr. Gager, do you know if there's any policy or procedures? Or recommendations from the C staff for events like these that Leslie's getting on?
It, it certainly is a, a, a valid point, um, about passing out, uh, wristbands. The organizer of this specific event had not noted, um, specifically whether wristbands would be used, however, they are. Uh, using a local bar, um, to provide the alcohol and, and. Uh, I know the proprietors of that establishment are certainly aware of the risk and penalties of underage alcohol sales, so. Um, we would be happy to, to talk to the, the vendor, um, and, and work out a, a wristband if that's the, the desire of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioners, did you, uh, vice your kale and then we'll go to you.
Um, I'm not aware that we have done wristband in the past. We certainly don't do them for the farmer's market and we sell beer and wine there. So I also know that all. To get the insurance, the alcohol service insurance and for anyone to have a beer and wine and or liquor license. Their servers do have to have be trained and have tips training to know how to identify people who are underage and or. To identify when to not over serve people. So I don't, I mean, I don't remember getting banded at the hoot when I was at the hoot and that was a whole downtown. Um, situation. I think that we can probably rely on us particularly when we're using alcohol vendors who. Have a license to maintain, um, that they're gonna do the, the right thing. I mean, a kid can walk in with five beers in their backpack and that's something different, you know, but, um. So I, I don't know, I, I, I don't see the need for it. And the other thing that really, I think a lot of our events have been really working to. Less than the amount of trash that we create and that is another thing that plastic wristbands that get thrown away. For hundreds of people are not awesome either. So just my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Sherko. Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I don't see, you know, we don't do it at farmers market with the live music there. And, you know, more than one alcohol vendor, it looks like just one here, since they were vendors, but. There again, once again, the chief police has to sign off on that and. And knowing that all stuff like that, they're not. By not cutting people appropriately, so to me, it seems gruesome and both these, uh, and, and this one happy cans composting. Is contributing to, you know, we'll be there and stuff like that. So I like to see stuff like that, like we do at the farmer's market. Everything has to be composed for, you know, as we're there, so, yeah, I. Things onerous at this point, but I, I can see it down the line for it, hence, you know, on a bigger event, but, um. Think the guy that's selling the shelves short of two hundred to five hundred, man, it's possible. And, uh, who, who the other one? Oh, yeah, the drifter, he and then the man of drifters, so it looks like ones. And twenty five percent doing it directly like that.
Anyone else? Uh, I guess my thought on that particular policy is if I would be interested if there's a need for it, like if. If we don't need the wristbands, if the police have it covered, we don't need a policy. It's too much and the police say. This is not manageable and we need a policy. I think that that, that's kind of where I stand. If, if it's not manageable by staff, then we should, if we need a policy, I'm interested. But if we don't need it, I don't want a policy for looking for a problem, as they say. Um, but I appreciate the conversation. Anything else? Otherwise, are we ready to vote? Okay, so we will motion by shorts and a second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
Or.
Vice Sherko.
Or Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda, action item C, update on strategic plan guiding principles. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. The item before the commission is simply an update from. Uh, myself and the rest of staff on the, uh, strategic plan document that we've adopted. Uh, six months ago yesterday and, um, over the last month or so. Uh, I have worked with the department heads and, uh, an external, um, facilitator. We've used those guiding principles. And, um, and developed those a little bit as far as, um. Mission, vision and values, um, certainly very specifically vision and, and, and goals slash values and, and to. Turn that into a work plan for the next year and a half or so with, with the team. And so. Um, the notes from our session are provided, uh, for your review and later this month, we all will be gathering with. The, the same facilitator that was used for this process, um, not only to revisit this. Um, these guiding principles, but then also to, to work on some other activities and. I will, um, you know, provide just a, a, a very quick, uh, run through of this. Um, on, on page fifty two of the packets, um, folks may note that, um, you know, that we've.
I'm sorry, our packet numbers don't match when it's online.
Yeah. So, yes, it is, I, I believe it is fifty two of the online packets, I believe fifty six and then.
But that's okay.
The bubbles, we're in the bubbles.
Yes, got it.
The bubbles, exactly. And so, um, these are the, the core of those areas of focus. Want to look relatively familiar to the commission and, um, uh, staff in our discussion with the. Uh, facilitator added a, a fifth area of focus workforce and in, in recognition of some of the conversations that happened at staff level and then have also happened. Between, um, the, the commission and myself during our, our budget workshop. And so then you folks, um, on the page after the bubbles will also see, um, a, a, a bit of a work plan that was from. Uh, this, the strategic exercise and, and, uh, the goals that were identified, um, by the commission in their process. And so. As I noted, uh, later this month, the, like, five of you, uh, and myself will meet with the facilitator to continue the process. I wanted to put this before you and I'm happy to stand for, uh, any questions or comments.
Um, and this is just a pause or a process question, since we're not making a decision, we don't need to open this to public comment.
That's correct.
Um, commissioners, who would like to go first? Commissioner Lyons.
I guess, I'm curious what you're looking for, uh, Mr. Diver from this discussion. Uh, is it, we're not making the vision, so what? You know, I, I wanted to provide you folks an update. Um, it's been six months since the, the initial document was the vision and goals was. Um, was approved by you folks. And so, um, wanted to give you folks an update, provide you a, a sense of, of the direction we are headed. And, and also to, you know, give the opportunity if there were any items of, of concern, red flags or, or additional areas of interest that you would love us to include that or pursue. Um, I would welcome those now or I would welcome those later this month that, that are subsequent.
Thanks for the clarifying question. Commissioners, does anyone wanna begin?
No, I, I, I'd like to work this, but, but I do. I'll be honest, I didn't go over this really in detail or anything, yeah. But, um. I like the visual. Where this is going, so, um. Drive on, because I, I wanna say, yeah, this is great. And, uh, I will bone up on it more, but. I didn't, nothing jumped out at me that. Um, we haven't talked about before. Thank you, O U.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons.
So if, if I'm remembering correctly, the. The vision came from that hot committee that was together last year and Quentin, you were on that.
Who's the two of us?
Thank you. Well, um, I really appreciate the vision. It seems to me to. Import with kind of what I hear from, from my constituents as kind of priorities of our community, so. I, I, I really like what's there. And then I, I find the goals to be well, well aligned with the vision. And it's, it's kind of exciting for me to kind of see this laid out, like see these goals clearly articulated. Um, it, it gives structure to how we can move forward from a policy perspective. Um, and nothing stands out meaning as. Out of line and I, I really appreciate it and I, I, I'm excited just to work on these goals, so. Um, I, I love what I'm seeing and also just I, I appreciate, I wanted to recognize the process too that. Of this, this, this ad hoc committee and I just think that it's a strength of. Of the commission that we go to the community for input on important decisions like this. Um, we're, we're indebted to the community for that, for that time and effort that they put into, to serving on these committees. And I think this is a great example of what comes from, from that service and I really appreciate it. So, I go.
Other commissioners? I'll go first, somebody you wanna go? Um, so I was on that committee and I would say, first of all, I appreciate that, um, I haven't seen anything like this before from. The executive branch laying out an internal process for the public to see what's happening when department heads get together. So I appreciate that this is laid out for the public because this is one thing that the public has specifically asked the commission for. Um, so this is really wonderful. Um, people can walk through this and see what you all did over a couple of days. And some of the conversations you had, so thank you for that. Um, having been on this committee, I would say that there are a couple of things I think are missing the mark. Um, we spent a lot of hours. I, more than I can. Count right now. It was a lot of meetings. Um, I wanna highlight them and then with the hope that when we have our. Deeper dive, we can get weedy then, but I don't wanna spend too much time getting weedy now, but I would like to highlight them for you so you can have an idea of what's. On my mind. So the first, um, goal that I don't see laid out in the plan is develop a plan to preserve access to clean water. So it's the last goal under transportation slash infrastructure. Um, I believe that when we put this into the goals, we were talking about how Livingston. Has been in the situation, not often, but a couple of times at least where we had to think about restricting water use. And, um, most of us that do any statewide work in Montana know that most communities in Montana are fa- facing. Uh, water restrictions. Um, it's a statewide issue. When we've asked in the past, we've been told everything's fine here. There's nothing to worry about, but I think it's time we need to start planning because if we wait till there's a problem, it's too late. And that's sort of what the ad hoc committee was getting at is we don't have a plan for protecting access to our water because. Simply drilling another well, well, for example, is not a plan. So, um, that was what we were getting at. I don't see that demonstrated in here. Um, the other thing was under. Local services. I feel like something got missed in translation and. I feel like our active transportation plan isn't in here. I feel like. That was something that we had put. Wasn't that under?
Yeah.
Public transportation.
Infrastructure.
But maybe you have that wrapped into the growth policy work, so we can talk about that. In terms of housing, it looks like it was interpreted to be public employee and workforce housing options. I'm not sure that public employee is exactly what the commission necessarily was getting at. I think maybe that's a conversation the commission. Needs to have is who is the housing for. Um, we definitely talked about pros and cons to having housing for employees, that there's some. Benefits and some concerns. It's very layered and complex and now it's probably not the time for the conversation, but certainly that's. Uh, important interpretation to get right.
Yeah.
Um, the, one of the last things was, um, the mission statement. We specifically amended this mission statement and chose not to include it intentionally because we didn't feel it was a reflection of the current time. There's some particularly, um, just, there's some particular words and phrases in here that, um. Don't represent where Livingston is at in terms of values around these areas. It's all on the record. It's on those videos, the conversations you have, so I'm not gonna repeat. Everything right now, but I think that that would be something that we would need to. Talk about the future.
Piggyback off of that.
Yeah, let me, I'm one of them, yeah. And the only other thing was, um, for, and yes, you can, when I've done it. Um, you know, other thing was. Local services strengthen social services locally. One thing the commission has talked about repeatedly is social worker and that didn't seem to make the list. I appreciate that there's other things added. Um, and that was our hope is that this would be. This would sort of blossom, right? As staff went through it, but I do wanna make sure that some of those commission priorities are not lost in the mix. Um, the other thing I like is I like how you've, I like how you've laid it out and really been transparent about where folks can expect. Like the public can expect to see some of these things moving through, um, whether it's the city or working with the county or different departments that they could be tracking if they're interested. Um, so thank you for that. I like the transparency. It's nice. Uh, Vice Sherko.
I'm just gonna piggyback off of the mission statement. We actually, as the committee, made a conscious decision to not have one. At all. We got the vision as what was needed and there was no need for the mission statement. And so that's why we didn't give you one, just, and I realized that. You were there and I can tell you that I don't know that anybody tuned in to many of our meetings, but, um, we, we made a pretty conscious decision not to. Have a mission statement and had researched other cities. Strategic plan and, and that's how we wound up where we were, just this context, um, for that. And yeah, we had specifically decided that that was not where we wanted to be with particularly this mission statement. Um, I think that was like the bigger one. I think, uh, turn it hits. A lot of the other things that I was thinking and I'm looking forward to the conversation that we'll have later in the month.
I do, I do read them. Yeah, I do wanna say when we did this, we intentionally tried to make it big picture. With the hope that the new manager, i.e. you and Mr. Gager, would like lead, lead a process by which the, um, it would get. Developed in a way that we couldn't predict, like exactly, you know, what was going to come next. And so I really do appreciate that this has become like. Next levels and, you know, another layer of the document adding more input from more people in the city. So thank you. For that. I don't want you to hear only the negative things because there's many things on here that are just kind of what I think what we were hoping for and expecting. So. Is any, does anybody else wanna provide feedback? Otherwise, I'm looking forward to when the commission gets together to discuss this.
Yeah.
Good start.
Yeah, and then, um. If folks have questions, they can reach out to city manager's office if the public, right, has questions about your process. Thank you. It's great.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback, everyone.
I'm looking forward to the. Meeting. It's gonna be fun. Let's talk more about big picture vision that you're making, I think. All right. Are you all ready for the next agenda item? All right. So next thing on the agenda, I'll make a motion to enter in a closed session to discuss both personal matters and litigation pursuant to title two, chapter three, section two oh three. In Montana code annotated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion, we need a second by Kale. Uh, roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Sherko.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes, so we're gonna move into closed session and then when we're done in closed session, we'll obviously come back out and come back on video and. Open the doors. But for now, thank you, everyone. Okay, so we are back to the agenda, uh, city manager permits.
Thank you, Chair News. I will, um, keep my comments free tonight. We heard, uh, a little bit this. Earlier this meeting from, uh, Patricia Graybo who hinted at, um, the approval of the. The historic district application covering Saginaw. the historic district application covering Sacagawea Park and Miles Park. And I'm happy to uh, report that we did receive notification from the state today that that has been and tentatively approved in, in Washington and last week. And so, uh, it's only a matter of time until the area down there is officially listed. And then I would, um, point out, I'm not sure if everyone had an opportunity to read the newsletter that went out later last night, but uh, the city did release a survey related to the home center project that is intended to reconfirm um, or at least understand if, if the data collected during the initial community needs assessment was in fact accurate. And, and then also, um, ask some questions about how users might use the facility and, and how, um, their willingness slash ability to fund the facility through a special district. So, I would encourage all members of the commission to take a look at the survey and if you don't have an access to it through your emails with the newsletter, let me know and I'm happy to send you a link.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons.
I think it was last commission meeting where we remarked on whether or not we're ever going to have good weather. Uh, and our, our prayers have been answered and I'm, I'm excited and grateful for that. And, uh, let's get out of here while the sun's still up so we can enjoy it. I yield.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, real quick, um, uh, constituent, are we do, we are doing the alley project between Geyser into the T alley T just before a part, correct?
That was the original plan for this summer CIP. The bids came in a bit higher than budget. And so at staff level, we are still reviewing those bids to determine if we have the funds to do the project here or next. Um, it's, it's unclear if that project will move forward this.
I can, um, it's relative. Yeah, I want to make a statement about today because they went ahead and did the sewer project at American Bank and the owl lounge as well. And um, they're being told they have to put concrete back in the alley where um, where the hookup is instead of something temporary. Um, believing that the alley was going to be tore up again anyway. So, um, kind of a conundrum there, you know, is there something cost effective that we could do now? Or I know we have drainage problems there and um, and that they're responsible for opening and closing regardless, but try and say middle tax where money, if we're going to just tear something up that they just spent six grand on, you know, to repair, um, that's why I'm bringing up, uh, because I guess they talked to Brad and he said he wouldn't share that alley thing was going to go through this year. And that was news to me. So I just, which is fine, you know, um, I said, I know it went out to bid, but we hadn't, hadn't come back then. I know, they had company for us, so.
We will.
So if there's something we can, um, I know, um, a couple of people called into Shannon, if you can just get back to them. We'll, we'll, because they're ready for concrete right now. So, we'll make a call more. All right, cool. That's all. How are you?
Thanks. Commissioner Friedman?
I'm good.
Vice Chair Kim? Uh, I would just say that Commissioner News and I, uh, got to judge some four H projects over the weekend. And, uh, they were presentation and descriptive talks. We have some smart children in our, um, in our community. They were from the ages of six to sixteen, so they were, they varied broadly. But, um, it was a lot of fun. So thank you for giving me the call and you needed some help and, um, it was, they were really great. So, um, just congratulations to, to those young people that did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. So, that was very fun. Um, okay.
Yeah, I feel like that was like the hardest, one of the harder things we've had to do as commissioners is judge children on their presentations. And there's some really good public speakers in Livingston.
Yeah, watch out, cause.
Yeah, I'd rather do a chili contest. Yeah.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Vice Chair Kale, for coming at the last minute when there were Judge Short and you answered the call on a weekend for me. Thank you. Um, uh, I saw the survey. It's great. I'm really excited to see what folks have to say. Since we haven't done a city survey yet, I think it'll be great to get that feedback. I'm with Commissioner Lyons. I have nothing else to add. We can go outside while it's sunny. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Uh, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, this Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at seven twenty five P M. Good night.
Good night.